Okay, so this is how the exam breakdown's gonna work. And then of course the sentences. So is there anything, what topics on here do you wanna go over the most?
What kind of chemistry are we talking about here?
It's the chemistry one over in class, so like um.
I can't.
I know, it's like valence electrons, um.
Okay, not like.
Ionic bonds, covalent bonds, hydrogen bonds.
Okay.
That sort of thing.
Okay.
Not like, no, nothing crazy.
Thank you, thank you, that's all I needed. I see the word chemistry and I start like having a connection high school, like I can't do that.
I know. Me too. You had a bad chemistry teacher too?
So here was the thing, I had a crappy chemistry teacher.
Because I did. That's what does it every time.
Only reason I passed was I was really, really sick my junior year.
Uh huh.
I had to have like my tonsils taken out and I couldn't stay well enough being in school to get them taken out 'cause every other week I had some kind of infection. So my doctor put me on homebound for three months to get me well enough to have surgery and then recover. I had a homebound teacher who was a chemistry major. That's the only reason I passed.
Oh nice, there you go.
I was like, but then the problem was I ended up failing trigonometry 'cause I had a crappy trig teacher. And.
I didn't read this chemistry. See, it depends on the teacher you get the first time around. If you get a bad teacher.
Yeah, really. Intrigued.
You're scarred for life.
You're brilliant.
Yeah, that is terrible. I keep that stuff in the pages.
I I did great in calculus and I had a great calculus teacher, amazing. Everyone who took the AP exam got five, looked amazing. I cannot remember how to do a single thing, it'd be all terrible.
She ain't take no crap. I think if I, when I had like teachers that don't take no crap.
You just like, you're like, alright, there we go.
Well, with my trig teacher, she didn't care about trigonometry because she had um an algebra student who had to take an SOL which reflects on her.
Yeah.
And trig doesn't, so because I was out for so long, I had a free period, so I went to her to study. And she was like, well, if any algebra people show up, you're not getting help today. And I was like, thanks.
I had an algebra teacher who used to write in sentences on the board.
Uh huh. Yeah.
You ever seen math done in sentences?
No, sounds terrible.
No. Yeah, it was. Alright, let's focus. How do we feel about the intro to anatomy and body regions like um as far as like brachial, um cervical, abdominal, thoracic, that sort of thing, the cavities, um as well as directional stuff, superior, inferior, how are we on those?
I feel okay about that.
We do a one, one through five, five being like I'm good, let's not even talk about it.
I'm one. I'm good.
Five.
Yeah.
That's good. Good there. Chemistry, that's being focused largely on like the different bonds, so ionic bond, covalent bond.
Can we go over it a little bit? Just like, it doesn't have to be like an in-depth thing, just kinda like remind me.
Yeah, let me pull it up.
And we can kinda like pop through the slots and be like, oh no, I don't remember any of this.
So the thing to remember on the twenty-five percent column is it's gonna be more broad concepts, it's not gonna be as in-depth uh questions. So try not to spend all your practice time on it, but.
Right, our heart is like, eh, I don't even remember anything that we talked about yet, honey.
Alright, so element versus atoms.
Right.
Uh the orbital model, you remember that? That's the.
Ele- electrons on the outside.
Yeah, it looks like a planetary model, the sun in the middle. Uh what's found in the middle, what's found in the nucleus?
Yep.
Protons, neutrons.
Protons and electrons on the outside.
Right, grumpy people or anxious socials.
Yep.
Um the different chemical bonds, I would say is probably the most important from this chapter. So you have covalent, right, those are the ones where they share electrons and they're super strong. You have ionic, those are the ones that are like, ah, I like you, I like you, like there's an attraction. And one steals an electron, the other one gives off an electron. So this is gonna be, so covalent is sharing, ionic is stealing. Okay, and then hydrogen bonds are formed by things that are in covalent bonds, but they're not evenly shared. So remember we talked about the water molecule, you have you have oxygen here and hydrogen here. Well, hydrogen and oxygen now are both, pretend technically, they're sharing. But the electron hangs around oxygen a little bit more frequently than it hangs around hydrogen, so it doesn't share evenly. So as a result, the oxygen is slightly negative. Where the hydrogen ends up being slightly positive.
Okay.
And because of this slight charge, it creates everything you know about water. The ability to dissolve things, the ability for it to have surface tension, you know, cohesion, the ability for it to go up. Paper towels, capillary reaction, right? Um this charge is essential for that. It also is essential for um protein structures. Well, structures produce about everything. Structure of your DNA. Without it, your DNA would just look like a ladder, right, it wouldn't have the the swans and the spirals. Okay, so hydrogen bonds are the weakest by far, but they're essential to life, right? So one of the questions you'll see all the time that's kind of tricky is like what bond is found between oxygen and hydrogen in water? And everyone always jumps to hydrogen bonds. There's not a hydrogen bond here, the bond they're talking about is the covalent bond.
Okay.
It's like a trick question. So it's the covalent bond. However, if they talk about between water molecules, right, then it's this bond, the dots.
Okay.
It's the slight negative and the slight positive like each other. And the same here, the slight positive here likes this slight positive, that's hydrogen bond.
So one molecule of water is covalent. Hy- water molecules together are hydrogen.
These are.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so their, water molecules together are attracted to each other through hydrogen bonds, but the water molecule itself is made of covalent bonds. It's kind of a trick question, but you'll get it soon enough.
Okay.
Carbon is special because it's got four on the outside. Every ele- every uh atom wants eight to be happy. Eight electrons on their outer shell to be happy, right? And um carbon has four, so it can share with a ton of them, right? It's right smackdown. So the other thing to take from this is um what makes up a, an organic compound?
It has to have carbon in it.
Carbon and?
No.
Hydro, hydrogen. Carbon, hydrogen required to say that it's worth getting. Also you need to know the four, four units here, macro molecules, so carbohydrates, proteins, nucleic acids and it's. Most people get the, these three and they always forget nucleic acids, just remember your DNA is part of them.
We go back, it was, it was carbohydrates, hydrogen.
Carbohydrates, proteins.
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 Nucleic acids basically DNA RNA, they're lipids.
Carbohydrates, proteins, nucleic acid, what is it, are organic comp- compounds.
Yeah, these are the major um macro molecules that make up life when we talk about the different kinds.
Okay.
Um. Hydrophilic, hydrophobic? How would you like this?
Good.
Right?
Yeah.
Love water or run from it?
Yep.
If it's a charged thing, right? If it's got a slight charge or any charge, it'll love water 'cause water's charged. If it doesn't, then it ignores water, it's got some charge. PH? Okay, alright. Every step in pH
Ten.
is tenfold.
Yeah.
In any direction, right?
Two times like.
Every step is ten.
Yep. Like point one is ten or like seven to eight?
Seven to eight is ten times difference.
Okay.
So you might see like on the practice exam that I posted, it was like, it goes from seven to four, what fo- how much more acidic is it? So it's ten, ten's ten, times ten. So it's a thousandfold. These ones I don't emphasize too much, but decomp synthesis and exchange, just knowing what that would look like.
Break down.
Right.
Synthesis is build.
Right.
Right, so decomp is break down. Example would be starch to glucose. So something I might say would be like uh um which of the following is an example of a decomposition reaction? And it would say um DNA to nucleotides or fatty acids to uh phospholipid or, I mean, so what's, for that example, it would be anything that goes from big to little pieces, right? Yeah, so starch to glucose molecules would be example of decomposition. I might say glucose to starch molecule and that would be synthesis, right? Hey, come on guys, made it! Um metabolism, anabolism. Right, this is for metabolism. Breaks it down, right, anabolism builds it up. Um monomers, polymers, right, starch is a.
Yeah. Monomer.
Oh, no, polymer.
Polymer.
Polymers is the monomer.
Glucose is the monomer.
Yep.
Hydrolysis.
Breaking.
To take water out.
Breaking it down by adding water.
By adding water.
Yeah, I know, it doesn't make sense. Did I explain how it actually works? You don't need to know how it actually works, you don't.
You did.
Okay. Um. Building blocks of carbs are monosaccharides. Again, don't put too much stress on this. Um lipids are made up of fatty acids and this is a glycerol. DNA RNA. Where is the energy stored in ATP?
The base.
In the bond.
Spase bonds, right? Protein do everything. Enzymes, what's the purpose of an enzyme?
It's to activate.
Lower, lowers the action potential, speeds up the reaction. Remember, action potential is the hill you have to climb in order to get the reaction started. So it's gonna lower the reaction, the activation energy and it's gonna speed up the reaction time. Oh, or enzymes fuse up afterwards, after a reaction. Do they change at all after a reaction? Super fast. Yeah, so that's the biochem. How we feel on that?
Okay.
Anything you wanted to go over more on biochem? So right now what we're doing, um Devorah, is we're just going through the, the light review of these guys and then we'll dig into the ones that are gonna be the major topic on the exam. Alright, how about cells? The different organelles that they use, it's gonna be like ribosomes and the glass.
Yeah, is that, is it gonna have any of the people's names on it? Like I don't remember that. Someone who discovered corps or something like that.
No, no, I don't usually do that. If you see anything, it might say, it might say the name, but it'll give some reference to it.
Okay.
So you'll know. It won't be like, what did Wa- Walter Cannon do? And you'd be like.
Walter Cannon, that's all I got.
Add his name in a book, anyway.
Yep.
Yeah. So you feel okay about cells? Cell wall. Um, oh, the other thing, we, we did osmosis in this one, right? Osmosis and diffusion. The selective membrane, do you remember? How do you feel about osmosis and diffusion?
Osmosis is where it comes in.
If I were, give me number five, three, two, listen to three and two.
Okay.
So diffusion, give me an example of something that diffuses.
Like my diffuser with the, it's like.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so you got a diffuser, right, that's in the oil. And what happens is you got high concentration here and it ends up diffusing across the room until the entire room smells this thing, right?
So high concentration does.
But now you know what sense is, is that doesn't matter anyway, like it's all about smell.
Because I'm gonna, yeah, that's like, I, I have the one that changes. I can put an oil on it, it's good.
Um so diffusion is going from a high concentration to a low concentration. Lower concentration, I should say. Until you reach equilibrium. And things in the cell will normally do this if nothing's in their way, right? So if you add sugar, a cube of sugar to tea, over time it will diffuse out, right? Um so nature really likes equilibrium. However, if I were to do this and put a wall here, what would happen?
It wouldn't be able to get through.
It wouldn't be able to get through it. It would be really concentrated on this side and not on this side, and nature hates that, right? So if this was a cell, sometimes what it does is it will put in a little window for that thing, so it can diffuse in. Okay? So this would be facilitated diffusion.
You might put in a window.
You put in a window. It basically says, I couldn't get it through the wall, so you put in a protein, transmembrane protein to let it go through, right? This is a perfect example of, remember we talked about action potential? Sodium floods in, potassium floods out, this is why, because all of a sudden you open one of these for sodium and then you open one for potassium and then it diffuse to reach equilibrium. Okay, um active is gonna be the other way around. So um active transport, that's diffusion. That's not bright enough. Alright, active transport is using ATP to concentrate something. Alright, so for instance, if this is sodium, where do we know there's more sodium? Inside or outside the cell?
Outside.
Outside the cell. So in active transport, you put in this machine that uses ATP and it pumps sodium out. Every time it does that, it uses energy, right?
It puts sodium in or out?
This one, ATP, this one pops sodium out to make it more concentrated outside.
Gotcha.
Okay? The idea here is active transport is gonna try and concentrate, so increased concentration here, lower concentration here. So active transport is going to use energy to try and concentrate stuff. That's no longer considered diffusion, 'cause diffusion just acts naturally, right? So passive diffusion is if there is no wall. Facilitated diffusion is if you have to put in a window. Active transport is if you're gonna try and go from a low concentration to a hot, you're gonna try and concentrate it back up. Right, you're gonna try and make it as concentrated as you can.
So if the window was there, it would go from like that side and try to.
Yeah, so if this was here, it would just try and diffuse back in. But it's not, they usually close it, they close the window. And so the sodium potassium pump is gonna pump sodium out using. Um now, osmosis is gonna be when you can't move these guys, so you move what instead?
Water.
Water, alright, and water's just always going to move to try and dilute something. So if we're in the same example, can I erase a little bit here? If we're in the same example, but you have no pumps and you have this wall. Nature's not happy because it's way concentrated outside and dilute inside, right? So I'll say this in the cell. At the wall, it's super concentrated up here. So these guys can't get through the wall, there's no windows or membrane proteins to help them get through. So water has to move instead.
It's added to the cell.
Yep, so water's gonna move here to try and dilute out this stuff to the same concentration. Alright, so say the concentration out in here is like this, it's going to leave concentrating the stuff in here and it's gonna help di- dilute stuff up here until they're eventually the same. Okay.
Is that hypertonic?
This would be a hypertonic solution. This concentration outside is higher hypertonic. So this is uh, what do I put up? Osmosis. So osmosis is uh water moves to dilute a more concentrated area. Okay, and again, that's because the electrolytes. This is by far the topic that everyone hates, so what I would say is, if you don't feel comfortable with it, do what you can, but it's not gonna be the whole exam, right? It's just a small portion of twenty-five percent. Right? Alright, how about tissues? Right, how we feel on tissues?
Well, I don't remember.
You don't remember? Neither do I, let's pull up. Epithelial, connective, nervous and muscular, this is the one where I gave you that chart. For gauze. This one?
Oh, I remember.
You like this chart?
Yeah, I made a lot of notes on that.
Yeah. So um the one, trying to remember, basically, you don't need to memorize everything, just, if you know the general purpose of them, you'll be good. So like, what's the point of squamous cells?
Oh, they um. One more type, I don't know.
Simple squamous.
Simple.
Simple squamous is gonna be real thin, that's for diffusion of substances like oxygen or nutrients. Alright, so simple squamous is gonna be something that lines your avialy, right, in your lungs, so oxygen can go through easily. Hypoidal is gonna be more secretions, um sudas stratified columnar is gonna be more in the chest, right, in your trachea, that sort of thing. Now stratified squamous is gonna be for protection. Any kind of stratified, extra layers for protection.
Derming.
Yeah, like keratinized is gonna be the waterproof version, so your skin on the outside. Non-keratinized is gonna be like your mucous membranes. Like in your mouth, that sort of thing. Um I don't really talk about stratified hypoidal that much. Uh transitional?
Do you stretch?
Like?
Yeah, it's a stretching, exactly. Alright, so the ones you actually have to know, I think I deleted most of these, right?
Yeah.
You have to know simple, stratospheric, simple, beautiful.
Yep. So just know the general idea behind it. So um this, yeah, just had you know loose and dense connective tissue, right? Dense is gonna be like your tendons, right, the ones that you can actually like feel. Loose is gonna be more of a gel-like substance, usually found under your skin, that's connective tissue under your skin. Um hyaline cartilage is the only cartilage I needed you to know, that's gonna be the most important one for you, right? That's what your bone start out as, that's what your uh articular joints are built from, right? The articular cartilage. Uh blood is the other one. Talked about, we'll talk more about this in AP two, begin AP two, and then bone tissue as well, right? Those are all connective.
So we're gonna need to remember the nature of them.
No, not yet. No, that's next, that's next. Um and then your different tissue types, so you have four. You have epithelial, connective, nervous and muscle. Remember, muscle is not part of the bones. Everyone thinks that, right? So if I say, can we talk about skeletal system? Remember I said, what are the parts of the skeletal system? Tendons and bones and?
Legumes.
Oh, sorry, not tendons. Well, I guess tendons are kind of the same thing. So ligaments, bones and cartilage, right? Alright, so how we feel on tissues? Good? Alright, go back to that, we need to. Skin. I've got the three big layers, what do they call?
Is it like basal or?
We need three big layers first.
Uh.
Epidermis.
Epidermis, dermis.
Dermis.
And hypo.
Hypo dermis.
Epidermis, dermis, hypodermis, also known as osteotinous. Putaneous just means skin, so it's like below the skin. Um what's found in the hypodermis?
Fatty.
Fat, blood vessels and nerves. What's found in the dermis?
Pigment.
What the dermis is? This is connective tissue. Blood vessels and nerves. Um also you have white blood cells down here. Alright, now let's talk about the layers of the epidermis. See if we can remember them. There was some saying y'all found, didn't you? Something about grandma.
Oh, I know that one. I put Lucy likes to give good luck.
Alright, let's start with the bottom, what's the bottom one?
Babel. Babel.
Um that's gonna have most of your cells, right? So stem cells, it has keratinocytes too. Also has tactile cells. And this one. Melanocytes, thank you. Alright, now the next one above the basal. The spider looking one?
Spinochs, spinochs.
Spinochs, yeah. This is mostly keratinocytes. And every now and then a what? It's a macrophage, but what do we call the macrophages in the skin? How annoying is it that macrophages have thirty names?
Really.
Yeah.
Really.
So it's a dendrite, so. I don't know the root for that, like I can't explain why it's called dendrite, but there you go. Alright, above, spinochs? Alright, what is happening here? Not a macrophage, but the keratinocytes are starting to die.
Oh, the water barrier.
Mm-hmm, perfect. Right, the water barrier. It's right there. Alright, what's above the granulosum sometimes? Yeah, lucidum. Alright, this is in what type of skin?
Thick.
Thick skin um. And at the top?
Cornea.
Cornea. Now, I probably I can't say I'm gonna put too much emphasis on the order of these, but I will, I do want you to know the importance of what, why do you have a water barrier? What does it do? Yeah, stop the water from getting in and blowing up your cells, right? If you take a bath, you don't want all your skin to explode. And then it also keeps water from getting out, you don't want it to be super dehydrated all the time and your skin cells die.
Keeps it regular.
Right, so it, it kinda, it's, just protects both sides. Um the lucidum, everyone likes 'cause it's the unique one, right, so I might ask a question on that. Uh what about burns? We talked about burns. So uh, first degree burn goes into where?
Petra.
Yeah, first degree burn. Second degree? Third degree?
The hypoderm.
Okay, uh, what about tattoos? Where would you want the tattoos to go?
Your own there.
In the dermis, yeah, you want them down here. Cause they're more likely to stay put, these cells are constantly growing in. Placing, yeah, exactly, growing in. Good on skin?
He said what else is in the basal, the stem cells?
Stem cells, keratinocytes, tactile, AKA merkel cells. And then melanocytes. Uh, the only other thing we really talked about on the skin lecture was moles versus hemangiomas. Versus skin cancer. Do you remember the difference in skin cancer? Again, very generic con- questions I won't ask you like super specific.
Or like melanoma, that was like the worst, right?
Melanoma is the worst, but also the rarest, yeah. Relate it melanoma, and then the A B C D rule.
The color.
So A is asymmetry?
B is border.
B is border. C is color, and then D? Diameter. Alrighty, good on skin. Endocrine, let's just come back to that one. That's one everyone likes to focus on, but uh, it'll take a while, it's gonna take time if we do it that way. Uh, let's come back to endocrine at the end. May I erase this? Alright. Bone tissue, how do we feel about that? Spongy. Compact, osteons, osteoblasts.
So blast building class and sites do good?
Yes. Blast and class are like the twins. That do the opposites of each other, that's for remodeling.
Mm-hmm.
But the calcium regulation is gonna be osteocites.
Okay.
And then maybe knowing like, rickets is because you're low on what?
Vitamin D.
Oh, well, calcium.
Calcium, yes, because vitamin D, yeah, rickets is low on calcium, brittle bone disease, you're low on?
Well, bone disease, you're low on vitamin D, no.
Stretchy stuff.
Not enough organic.
Organic, so like that, so the way I, the way I try and get people to remember this is the organic is like the muscles. Like if you're eating a steak, it's an organic steak. That does not look like a steak. I started drawing a bicep, alright? Uh, I don't know. Steak is the organic. And steak is what? Is it hard and brittle, or is it nice and squishy? Nice and squishy, right, and flexible. The or- the non-or- inorganic. Get it out one way or another, is gonna be like, I don't know. Uh. Uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Toffee, right, it's like crunchy. So if you're making some horrible dessert or dinner, that includes both of these, right? So basically, the more organic you have, the more flexible your bones are. The more inorganic you have, the harder they are. But if you just have inorganic, your bones will be like toffee, what's gonna happen if you hit them against anything?
You're breaking for hundred weight.
It's gonna break, right? What about if you just have too much organic? Not, no, just organic, they're gonna be too soft.
Oh. Right.
Right, so calcium. And phospho- phosphorus. Phosphorus are inorganic, alright, these are the guys that are gonna keep your bones hard and strong. Organic is gonna be more like proteins. Alright, just like steak is full of protein. So. Brittle bone disease means you have, you're missing what?
Organic.
Yeah, you're missing the flexible part, it's just, just all hard, no flexibility. Um, rickets, your bones are bending, so what are you missing?
Inorganic.
The hard stuff.
So, um, can you explain a little bit more about again about the bone? The fact, the process of all the class and bone class?
Mm-hmm.
When, when like for example, we're grown, my, and we have uh deposits, etch, or that's where we're um in the bone, when we build?
Yeah, yeah, so um, so for growth and remodeling. Growth and bone. Remodeling. That's gonna be the twins, right? That's gonna be osteoblasts. The builder. And osteoclasts. The cutter, right? Big old one, okay? And then osteoblasts is the builder, I really need to learn how to draw a hard hat.
Looks like hard hat to me.
What'd you say?
So it looks like a whole hard hat to me, ornate glue.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so for bone remodeling, it's the blast and class twins. They're gonna help build bone and then trim it into the right shape. Bone repair, that sort of stuff. Now calcium regulation. I should say blood calcium regulation is going to be the osteocyte. He's gonna be able to do both.
So like we have excess.
Excess blood calcium?
It gets stored.
It, he'll take it and put it in the bone, yep, he'll store it in the bone. He'll take it out of your blood.
He'll take it out, so that when we need it to grow, then osteoclasts and osteoclasts comes out and get it.
Osteo.
Osteo.
Yes, so when we need to build and trim, right, that's what they'll use it. This guy is just to control your blood calcium. So this is PTH. And calcitonin.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. So PTH is gonna pump up your blood calcium. So he's, so osteocytes are gonna cut up your blood, uh, your blood. Osteocytes are gonna cut the bone up. And throw it back into the blood. So that's gonna be your PTH on this side. Calcitonin. Needs to tone down your blood calcium. So he's gonna store it away.
He got that regulated by, by you, like we, is he treated or?
You can also secrete it, I don't go into that detail, but yes, yeah. They see it very closely. Alright, so how we feel on bone tissue?
And one question, um. How hard would it be to, with one of them, I mean, to like, um, I. Hypothalamus evolving to this area?
Um, yes, but that's the endocrine system, we'll come back to that.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, I, the endocrine I wanna hit last in this, because that's the one that usually takes up the most time. Alright, uh, muscle tissue, how do we feel about, you remember the, the striations, the Z disc or Z line?
I don't really, if I could ever play with that whole.
You don't need to label the whole thing again, uh, it's gonna be the broad concept, so. What activates? What neurotransmitter activates a muscle cell? Neurotransmitter.
ACH.
ACH, acetylcholine, um, what's the place where the neuron meets the muscle, what's that called?
The nerve junction.
Neuromuscular junction, very good, um. When calcium is released, what happens? Just generally. You release calcium, what does the muscle cell do?
Contract.
It contracts, perfect. Uh, what's trophomycin's job? What is, where is it?
Stop the myosin.
Stop the myosin.
Yeah, stops the myo- it coats, it coats the actin, so the myosin can't grab hold until it needs to, and it goes right there. Yeah, uh, how many ATPs are needed for a contraction and a relaxation of a myosin head? So for the myosin head, the grappling hook to like grapple, move it forward, and then reset, how many ATPs is that? Do you remember? Two, right, that's what causes rigor mortis, so one to swing it forward. And one to reset, so what happens with rigor mortis is you've swung it forward, and then you run out of ATP, and you're stuck in contraction.
So it's how much, two ATPs needed for muscle movement?
Like one myosin head to move forward and back. Uh, what about? Uh, we talked about curare versus botulism? I don't even know if we'll go into this much detail, but. Right, they both cause flaccid paralysis. One targets the neurons, one targets the receptors. So. I don't even remember, so it's not gonna be honest. I always get confused, you remember, I think it's curare provides the neuron from releasing acetylcholine from throwing up on the dude. You remember that guy, Drew? Get the neurons, he open, he throws up acetylcholine.
He's gonna pee himself.
And then he pees on himself, yeah.
You know about that.
Here it is. Right, he becomes positive. Alright, and then he wets himself, and he contracts, cause now he's covered in calcium. Vaguely?
Yeah.
Cool. Um. Sure, anything, what else would be on bone or muscle tissue? Uh, what about? Uh, muscular dystrophy, what's going on there?
Um. The, the muscles, um, they don't have, um, they have too much, um, acids, and they contract, or they still.
No, so muscular dystrophy, the dystrophin protein is like.
Oh, the protein, yeah.
So remember I was inside little plastic bag, so I, like, the inside muscle contracts, but it's not attached to the cell membrane anymore. Or not well, so when it contracts, the cell membrane doesn't contract with it, so the cell's kind of weakly contracting, not really doing its job. Um, I don't remember if there's no many bones or muscles labeled, but if I do, it's gonna be real basic ones, like. This one is the?
Femur.
Femur, right, it'll be something like that.
Are we gonna know which, have to know which way the classical faces?
No, I know, everyone hates that one. So the bones and muscles to know, if I have anything on there, it's gonna be really basic ones, it won't be the, the three or the four quadriceps or the three hamstrings. It won't, won't be that, it'll just be really obvious ones.
Awesome.
Um, same with the bones, they'll be very straightforward, it's not gonna be anything tricky. Okay, so now on to the endocrine section. Dun, dun, daa. Again, this is gonna be really straightforward, what does melatonin do?
Stop your sleep.
Yeah, it's repeating rhythms, um, what about? Hmm, oxytocin is known as the?
Love.
The love hormone, right? Um. Negative feedback, right, how's negative feedback work? If I use thyroid as an example, right?
We release too much thyroid.
Right, it's gonna release T three, T four, they're gonna go back and say, alright hypothalamus, we're done, you can stop.
I'm, or I'm guessing, it's okay, we need more, it's not bad.
Yeah, and then as this goes down, it's gonna start over, yeah. Uh, I'm not gonna ask you like every order of everything, it's not gonna be like CRH goes to ACTH goes to this, releases this, it's not gonna be like that. What I might ask is um. If I give you a hypothalamus hormone, it might be something that says RH at the back, like releasing hormones coming from the hypothalamus, right? So CRH is released from where?
The hypothalamus.
Yeah, um. Uh, blanking. PRH.
P- 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 thyroid.
Releasing hormone, guys.
Good.
GnRH.
Releasing hypothalamus.
Hypothalamus, right, right, so that's the protein, yeah. Alright, um. What are the two that are only released from, that are only made in hypothalamus that are released directly from in posterior tumor?
ADH.
ADH and oxytocin, perfect. Something like that, it's not gonna be anything more than that, right, so don't go memorizing everything all over again. Um. What side effects, or what symptoms might you see from someone who has? Uh. Um. In, over secretion of growth hormone.
Gigantism?
Yeah, so someone's secreting too much hormone, growth hormone, they're gonna have gigantism. That's what it's called in kids, in adults, they call it acromegaly. Um, what might you see as symptoms of someone who has hyperthyroid? Hyperthyroidism, what sort of?
Always cold, right, or nothing.
Hyperthyroid, what's, what's their metabolism doing?
Warm fast.
Their metabolism going fast, metabolism keeps you warm. Alright, so it'll be thinner, it'll be warm, maybe irritable, right, hypothyroid.
Sluggish, sluggish, tired.
Sluggish, cold, tired, right?
Constant.
Weekenders, possible weekend, yeah. Perfect, those are the kind of things I'm looking for. So let's check that off for now, we can come back to any of these if you want. Let's take a break, and then we'll dig into the bigger chunk. Okay?
Yeah, know anything about diabetes?
Yes, you do, we'll go over diabetes when we come back, how's that? Alright, so now we're gonna go over the stuff on the left side here, whatever you guys wanna talk about. Again, this is gonna be more like a regular exam, this portion, so it's gonna be detail, I want you to understand it, be able to apply it. Um. So the nervous system, tissues, the cranial nerves, you're gonna need to know the number. Uh, the name. And the general function. So what I mean by that is optic nerve does, is which number? Yeah, it's the second one, so it's two, I always have to write them all down, which by the way, you're totally allowed to do them in the exam, so you can write all over. Uh, so it's the second one, it's the optic nerve, what's the general function?
Vision.
Vision, right, oculomotor is gonna be like eye movement, I'm not gonna be specific about like which direction.
Okay.
Cause there's like four nerves that can control eye movement, right?
Do we need to know the different motor sensor or both, or just?
Yes. You, um. Just remember the sayings on that.
Yeah, diabetes first.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, diabetes.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Little cranial nerves, I'll just check off, because there's not much additional stuff I can teach you on that one. Uh, so diabetes, there are two major types. What does the word diabetes mean? I said, what is the actual meaning when someone says diabetic, what does it mean? It means they pee too much.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, yeah, pee too much. Right? So, there's two reasons you can pee too much, you can have too much blood glucose, that would be the mellitus. And I like to think about this because it sounds like molasses, molasses is made up of sugar, right? Diabetes insipidus. Insipid means boring, so your urine tastes squattery, boring, not sweet, like diabetes once. So diabetes mellitus we're more familiar with, right, this is the glucose, insulin. Issue, okay, so type one and type two is what you have. You also gestational, we won't talk about that, 'cause it's not well understood. So type one diabetes mellitus is gonna be what? What's the problem there?
It doesn't make it at all, your body's autoimmune, autoimmune.
Type one.
Yeah, so, so it's the autoimmune disorder. Where you destroy. The cells that make insulin. Which are beta cells. So your body literally cannot make insulin. Alright, this is the one they call juvenile diabetes. Usually, 'cause the autoimmune disorder kicks in at a young age, so when they're younger, they'll know, that's when they'll start identifying juvenile diabetics.
They're not making insulin.
Huh?
I was reading.
Okay, alright, so the other one is the one that is more common, what, uh, what causes this?
Sensory, the receptors go down, they don't be.
Yeah, down regulation of insulin receptors. On your body cells, all your cells, right? So what's happening here is, especially if you have a poor diet, right, you're eating, you get a spike of glucose and then a spike of insulin. And if your cells are constantly hit with that wash of insulin, right, when we're talking about the receptors. If something's really easy to find, are you gonna waste energy putting lots of receptors up?
Yeah.
No, so you put few and fewer receptors up, and then when insulin gets low, is it easy to get sugar into your body? No, right, so you end up with these peaks and valleys, so what happens is the peaks. Of glucose and insulin. Drive down regulation of the receptors. And of course, um, having like a high body fat can also do this, there's hormones that the adipose tissue actually secrete, but. For now, let's just talk about peaks and glucose, so this is gonna be what they often call insulin. Uh, uh, insensitivity. So it's just like insensitivity that's caused by you drinking caffeine all the time, right, if you drink lots of coffee. Over time, it's gonna become less and less effective, so you need more and more and more, right? Does that make sense? Where are we at with this, okay, so, so type two is the one we talk about a lot, this is the one where the receptors disappear on the rest of your body cells. Right, and because of that, you're less and less sensitive, so you need more and more insulin, this can fry out your pancreas, right? Or your pancreas could just be not able to make that much, so you have to actually take injections of insulin as well. Unfortunately, the more injections of insulin you take, what happens?
Oh, you're, you need the receptors.
The more receptors go down, yeah, so this is the one where people say like diet, exercise, they have the, um, low glycemic index. So you don't get those peaks, so.
And it's type one where they have the pump typically.
Mm-hmm, yeah, usually type one is the pump.
Yeah.
'Cause they'll always need it, they, there's never, they're never something they're gonna be able to make it soon.
They can't make sure I didn't go away.
Okay, so this is sugar and insulin, diabetes mellitus, right, glucose and insulin. We'll talk more next semester about why it makes you pee more. But it's about osmosis in the, in the, um, the kidneys, right, so if you have lots of sugar in your urine, water's gonna flow there, it makes you pee more. Anyway, uh, diabetes insipidus, you don't need to know as much until next semester, basically what happens here is you're missing ADH or you have low levels of ADH. So ADH picks in to reserve water. It's anti-diuretic. So when you take a diuretic, what happens?
You, you.
A lot.
You pee a lot, if you take an anti-diuretic, what happens?
You don't.
Yeah, you save the water, so these people are missing or not secreting enough ADH. So they're constantly peeing out water that they should be saving, so no matter how dehydrated they are, they're gonna lose the water, they're just gonna keep peeing the same.
They keep, they'll pee.
You know, like when you're dehydrated, you pee and it's like neon yellow?
Yeah.
They don't do that.
But then, and this, this, if this one is gonna do about the body?
Yeah.
Okay.
So ADH, this is the one that, uh, is pretty spread on hypothalamus, remember? That's okay, but you don't need type two, but these are the two types.
And also they're sent there, it need to be like the dose.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yep. Actually, I don't know if I've met anyone who's, uh, who's di, has diabetes insipidus. Bet plenty of them with mellitus. So sometimes they call this, uh. Um. What is it, um, D M? Oh dang, oh, I forgot. Insulin, uh, insulin dependent diabetes mellitus.
The kids who got that, have to count their calories.
Huh?
Kids with, uh, one, gotta count their calories, like theirs.
Really? Their calories or their carbs?
Their carbs.
Oh, yeah.
You have to like, burn out, they give me like labels because.
So you can predict, there was a.
Yeah, that was boot nursing.
Well, there was a story I read online, whether it's true or not, whatever, but, um, a woman was said that she was diabetic and I don't know which type, I think probably type two. But, um, she'd gone to a restaurant and asked for diet coke, because there was no sugar in it.
Mm-hmm.
So she had her dinner, you know, she had drank like four diet coaks.
Right, yeah.
Um, and then she was feeling really bad, ended up in hospital, nearly died, 'cause her glucose went up to like over a thousand.
Oh.
Because the woman was like, oh, we were out of diet coke, so I just gave you regular.
Yeah.
And she was like, oh, I'm diabetic, it's not like a preference issue, it's like, you're gonna kill me, yeah, so she almost died, it's like she was in the emergency room.
Yeah.
Wow. The worst.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if I had a hospital built for her, I would.
Absolutely.
Get someone in the hospital.
Yeah, I guess we gotta be trained better, it's not these people.
Yeah, right, be like, it's not a preference, it's an actual health condition.
Yeah.
Okay, so diabetes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, which areas would you like to go over first?
Action potential?
Action potential? Everyone's favorite, just kidding, 'cause everyone's least favorite. Remember the chart?
Is it like? Oh, is this the, where we go seventy, fifty, ninety, fifty-two, twenty?
Nagative. Um, or fifty-six?
Okay, I'm wondering.
Action potential versus graded, local potentials, right? Okay, so, local potentials on the dendrites are coming in, signal's going, go up, go down, go up, go down, go up, ah, go down, down. And all of a sudden, it goes up enough, hits the threshold. What happens in the cell?
You gotta, you do it down, it goes down.
What, what happens?
When you go down, it's getting regulated now.
Not yet, it's gotta go up first, gotta, gotta get up to get down.
When it, it hit that, it goes up.
It goes straight up?
Yeah.
And then it tanks down and it comes back. Right, so, these are all local potentials. Right, and then it hits the threshold. And you've just achieved to activate what?
General?
Action potential! Now we all know my house party story, right?
Yes.
Alright, so what's going on here? In the cell, what's, what's moving around?
Oh, sodium, calcium.
Not yet.
Sodium, I mean potassium.
Yeah, sodium comes to the party.
Comes to the party, but then potassium.
Sodium enters, and then what happens to potassium?
Here we go.
Potassium leaves. And then what happens down here, what's going on?
It's calling.
Huh? Not yet.
The parents have come reset everything.
Not yet, what's, what's the situation here, why is this section unique? Uh, it's lower than the starting point, right?
Hyperpolarized.
Yeah. It's hyperpolarized, right, this is the refractory period. It's like the resting period, you cannot reactivate anything until it gets out there, that's when the sodium potassium pump comes in. Okay, so, what is this phase called going up?
Polar.
Depolar.
Depolar, alright, this is depolarization.
Depolar. So it's the top of the, the, the going up.
The going up is depolarization, 'cause you're switching the charges from negative to positive, depolarization. The very top is, what's happening?
Polar.
Neuron fires, yes, and then what go, when you wrote down, it's called? Repolarization. Oh, it's hard to do this. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Let's see, let me come up with a way to remember this, we go, D R R? Depolar, repolar, reset. And then. N K P, sodium, potassium, and then the pump, sodium potassium pump? I don't know. So depolar, repolar, and then reset. Sodium, potassium, and then the pump kicks in. With pants.
I know, I feel that every time you do this, all I can think about is Eric Carter's song, Aaron's Party. Where he throws the party and then his parents come home and like kill him.
Uh. So the curve is the what again?
Which curve?
The bottom.
This is hyperpolarization, yeah, I mean, we should have looked up. Hyperpole. Oh, that should be a thing. Uh, D R H R. Hyperpole and reset. D R H R. N K P, I don't know. Just trying to make it easier, but. Alright, um, where does the neuron receive signal? Um.
Dendrite.
The dendrites, um, where does the neuron send signal from?
The axon.
Yeah, the axon, or down the axon, it's a terminal button, or synaptic knob, or you got it. How do you feel about action potentials?
Better.
Thing's okay?
Okay.
Um. Nervous system is gonna be like, uh, structures of neuron, so myelin sheath, saltatory conduction is the jumping signal, yeah.
That's saltatory?
Yeah, why would you have, why would you ever have an unmyelinated neuron?
Slowly.
It will be slower, but what's the benefit to unmyelinated?
Go faster.
Mm-hmm, not unmyelinated. You can fit more in one area.
Oh, uh.
Right, so instead of one ma, one schwann cell being around each one. Instead of one schwann cell being around each one and taking up lots of space, one schwann cell can hold multiple at a time. So they're slower, but it fits in a smaller area, it's more compact. And it's the schwann cell that holds them, so schwann cells can hold unmyelinated fibers. They just, the schwann cell will not produce anymore. Uh, how about the different cells in the brain, CNS versus PNS? What are the cells in the CNS? Name them.
I'm like.
For, any? In the CNS, what are the cells we talked about? Oh, the microglia, or the, the glial cells, it's giving, microglia. What was that? Yeah, these look like, so this is gonna be like the, um, macrophages. What else? Remember that picture, right, it had like blood vessel traveling, then it had neurons, had like one, like an octopus. Oxygen, yeah, all the go. Dendrocyte? That's gonna be responsible for what? What's that make?
Mix the height.
Myelin, yeah. Alright, what else is in there? Ah, nice one. Endomals cells, that's gonna be what, what do they do?
Pentadural?
Huh? Uh, pendible. Anyone remember? Yeah, CSF. CSF. Myelin. Macrophages. Alright, you're only missing one more. Astrocyte. What does the astrocyte do, it does a lot of stuff, but what is the thing that I emphasized? Text your brain.
Oh, the blood brain barrier?
Yeah, that's gonna be your blood brain barrier. Alright, what two are in the PNS, we really only mentioned one, I didn't talk to the twenty other ones, so the one was satellite cells. Um, this is around the soma. So they protect the soma, but we don't really talk about that much, what was the other one? Already talked about it today, five minutes ago.
Swine.
Schwann cells. And what do they do?
Maiya.
Yeah, it's gonna be a smile. Uh.
What's that E word up there under CSF?
Ependymal? E P E N D Y. M A L. Alright, parts of the cell, what's this called?
Terminal.
Terminal button or synaptic knob, what are these things?
Myelinated.
These are schwann cells, myelinated schwann cells, or interdotes?
Interdotes.
What are these things called, space in between them?
Nod to brim.
Yeah, nod to brim, yeah. That's like a jaw. What is this thing called? It's the names, axon phyllic or?
By trigger zone.
Trigger zone, yeah. Alright, these things poorly drawn, but. This thing? This part?
Soma.
Soma or body? Alright, this part?
Paxoma.
Um, what is it released? What are they called?
Neurotransmitters.
Neurotransmitters. Do neurons touch each other?
No.
They never touch, right, what do they have instead?
They send. The dendrite, the reciprocal.
The receptor. Yeah, they send the neurotransmitters, but they have a, um, synaptic cleft, right?
Right, oh.
Alright, so they never touch, it's a common question. Um, what direction is the signal gonna go in this picture?
Oh, oh, no.
It's going down, yeah.
Straight down.
Um. If this is a synapse, this is the presynaptic neuron, this is the what?
Post-synaptic.
Post-synaptic, yeah. Yeah, it really is that straightforward.
Uh, for once.
For once.
Say it again.
Presynaptic neuron, this is this is the synapse you're talking about, this is the presynaptic neuron, postsynaptic neuron. So which one sends the neurotransmitters?
Pre-synaptic.
Which one has the receptors? The, oh, postsynaptic, yeah. Um. Trying to think. I can't think of anything else, you see, is the PowerPoint? No? Wow. Any questions on the nervous system? I can't think of much else at the moment. Uh, sensory versus, is it motor? Ganglions are made up of what?
Bodies.
The bodies, right? So the brain organized, the brain is bioq or organize your nerves very well, right? It bumbles up all of the axons together, those are gonna be called your nerves. The lumps of the cell bodies are your ganglia. Or ganglion.
That's what ganglia is of like a bunch of nerves.
No, ganglia is a bunch of cell bodies, of the neurons. The nerves are technically the axons. All bundled together. Um. The meninges, how do you feel about those, the three layers, that's part of the brain.
We've got the.
Duron.
Duron or or acumata, diamata.
You got it. Okay, that's pretty much everything in the. Yeah, just, um, uh, I mean, yeah, I don't know what detail you would really need for meningitis, other than.
Inflammation of meninges.
Yeah, inflammation of meninges, alright.
Is that what we, is it the spinal cord or that we need like the, we do lump occlusions at after the one?
That's for spinal cord, mm-hmm. But yes, you do need to know. Alright, so brain and spinal cord, you need to know the different lobes. Uh, very generally the function of the lobes, very generally, right, like motor movements, the cerebellum. Front prefrontal, the frontal lobes are gonna be like major processing of emotions, movement, that sort of thing. Um, you need to know the anatomies and the anatomical features, so longitudinal fissure versus keeps, yeah, that or the line. So fissure, a fissure in something is what? You heard this term, like a fissure. It's like a space, right, so longitudinal fissure is space, the clog is close, um.
Velcro is a space.
It's keeps the velcro together. Um, cerebellum versus cerebrum. The brain stem. Right, the structure of the brain stem. So brain stem, the lobes, anatomy of the brain, landmarks, what's the X under the brain called? The X that you see under the brain, we did the dissecting. It is a cranium there. Alright, it is the optic. Yeah. Yeah, that's what it is. Thanks for the help. Yep, you're right. Alright, um, let's see. The brain stem would be like ponds and. Yeah, so this would be like the thalamus. Hypothalamus. Which are part of the dysephaline. Uh, ponds and you'll, uh, add midline. Um. Try to think of the brain, if there's anything else. Luction. The brain lusher, just gonna steal like PowerPoints.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's alright. Yeah, the spinal cord, I'll steal that one. Alright, so the spinal cord. Know where it ends? Where does it end?
L one.
L one, very good, um, the different regions. So the different names to different regions, right, it's just like the vertebrae, it's not in the same spot as the vertebrae, but it's got the same names, right?
Cervical.
Yes, cervical, thoracic. Lumbar, sacral, coccygial.
Can you tell the numbers again?
Um, oh yeah, so, yeah, it's eight, twelve, five, five, one. So it's like late breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Your sacral and top is three.
Coccygial. Okay, um, where are the enlargements and what do they represent?
Um.
Spinal cord enlargement, yeah.
Lumbar.
Yeah, it's where the.
It's where the limb control.
It's little limbs, right, so the spinal cord has two enlargements in it, cervical region and lumbar enlargements. Those are for going out to the limbs. The meninges, the grafted there, oh, at the bottom of the spinal cord, you have a little triangle shaped thing and then these little squigglies. So what's the triangle called? This is the medullary cone? This is what? Caught an equina, very good. Horse tail. Alright. Where? Where in the spinal cord, this area of the moshai, would you give or would you take cerebral spinal fluid, the lumbar puncture, where would you give it?
Under L one.
Below L one. Right, you're gonna give it down here, why?
No spinal fluid.
Yeah, no spinal cord to him. What layer of the meninges do you take cerebral spinal fluid from?
Under subarachoid.
Yeah, subarachoid.
Is that like, some of my kids have subarachoids, is that what the system is?
Um, okay, epidural is gonna be where on the spinal cord? Somewhere around here-ish, right? Um, it's usually like right here. Um.
Verratic area.
And then what layer do you go to? The pain. The fat where?
Above the deramata.
Yeah, above deramata. That's why it's called an epidural. Above deramata. That one does not need to be as low. Right, because you're not going as deep in, and also you wanna make sure to target the nerves. Spina bifida? What is it, what it causes?
It does unform. It doesn't, the spinal.
The bones, yeah, the vertebrae.
It doesn't form.
Mm-hmm, and what's the cause of that?
Uh, low folic acid.
Low folic acid, so now we put folic acid in what?
Everything.
Everything, flour, yeah.
Flour.
Right? Um, gray matter is made up of what part of the neuron?
The neuron, uh.
So gray matter and white matter, if I'm looking at one neuron, what part would be the gray matter of that neuron, what would be the white?
The body.
The body is the gray matter, right? So this part is the gray matter. And the part with all the myelin on it is the white matter, because myelin is white. It's a Saturday and a snow day, come on, can't expect too much.
The axon. The axon is the white matter.
Yep. Um, gray matter is on the outside of the brain, but where is it in the spinal cord? Inside, remember, it's flipped. Okay, we talked about sensory and motor, sensory sensory goes which way on the spinal cord? Up or down?
Up.
Sensory.
Amarin.
Go up.
Yep, it goes up. Just one other people think about. Yeah, it's amarin, it goes up to hit the brain, perfect. Now, that's the ascending tract, right? The descending tract is gonna be what then?
Amarin.
It's gonna, it's gonna go down?
Same dosage is to go through.
Right, what type of neurons are those? If we said this going up is sensory, going down would be?
Motor.
Then?
Motor.
It would be descending, going down, descending, it'd be motor. How many pair of spinal nerves?
Thirty-one pairs.
Thirty-one pair, what's a plexus? You have brachial process, cervical plexus. Yeah, so instead of these guys branching straight out. And just affecting their own little sections, in the plexus, they merge together and then branch back out again. So the plexus, they form like a network. Alright, so plexus is basically a network, anytime you see that. Um, actually, if you watched The Good Doctor, the episode last night, they they had a brachial plexus issue, they actually talked about it, it was in his brachial plexus, you're like, what? It's a great show.
It's a great show, I actually been watching it. I just, I never watched it and I just branched three days. Mm-hmm, I was like, oh, and I was looking up the meetings and I was like, okay.
I know, I used to, my old anatomy class in high school, um, once a month you'd bring in the TV, everyone loved that, I just forgot, right? And you'd watch an episode of ER and you'd have to write down the anatomical terms that you hear while watching the show. It's a great exercise, it's really.
Especially one of the first incident that they had to like, oh no, the one that they had to.
With the whiskey bottle and.
Yes, don't you guess, and you're like, oh my gosh, gloral fusion, yeah.
God. I know this.
That one was incredible.
I got this.
Or what is it, chest cavity, yes, so.
Oh, this should be better, it would be a doctor experience.
Yeah, why not?
I got this, so we gotta give out a lot of, we got this.
Um, dermatome is a what? As this location or in the nerves. Yeah, so it's the area where one spinal nerve is gonna innervate the skin, right?
You say that again?
Dermatome, it's, is this guy right here?
Okay.
Remember, so it's one area that each spinal nerve is gonna, it's this for the skin.
Oh, clearly it's. Okay, so where where you would feel it?
Where you would feel it.
Yeah, so if you're not here, I won't be able to put here, but I can still feel down here hopefully, yes.
Yeah, exactly, or if you have a herniated disc, you won't be able to feel the skin where that herniation is.
Where. Gotcha, where you can feel it around there.
Yep. Um, chicken pox versus shingles, same virus, can you give someone chicken pox when you have shingles?
Yes, yeah. No.
Yes, you give someone chicken pox.
Yes.
Can you give someone shingles when you have shingles?
No.
No. Right? So if you have shingles and you like rub up on someone, you're exposing them to varicella zoster virus. Which in that avenue could give them chicken pox, but shingles can only happen if it's. If you get, if, if you get, if the chicken pox virus infects you, they can you get chicken pox and it infects your, uh, dorsal ganglia. And then it lives there for however long, for reactivates from there. So if you have shingles and you're spreading virus on them, you're not putting it directly into their spinal nerve, right? So it would just cause a general chicken pox.
And then they could get.
And then later on, they could possibly get shingles years from now.
So this is just for my own personal like.
Mm-hmm.
Sanity, so I had, you know, the chicken pox vaccine, so I've never had chicken pox, can I still get shingles from the vaccine?
Mm-hmm. It's possible, it's not as likely, you have a lower chance, I'm the same way, I never got it, I got the vaccine when I was twelve, but no.
I got it at birth and then actually with my second one was a year ago.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, you can, they say you can, but it's just lower chance.
Because it's less live in your body.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I think they use a live virus for chicken pox, don't they?
They do, it's, yes, it's live.
So there's there's potential for it to replicate into your spinal nerve, but.
It's less likely than if you had the oliver brash.
Alright, reflexes go straight to where and back?
There's another, just like. It doesn't hit the spinal cord.
It goes to spinal cord and shoot straight back, it doesn't go up to the.
Not the front.
Um, proprioception, what's the point? What is proprioception? Sounds like perception. Alright, that's being able to tell where you are in space with, right, by the neurons in your fingers and muscle cells, so you don't fall over. I can't find my brain, I can't. Can't find your brain. I'm sorry. I could preach out another one if you'd like.
I would love it.
You would love it, oh, alright, okay. And finally, the ANS. Uh, dun dun da. Let's just pull apart, shall we? We're almost done, guys. Alright, chapter fifteen. The ANS is gonna be talking about what specific types of actions. Is it motor or sensory?
Motor.
Sensory, it's motor, it's movement of what?
The organs.
Organs, yes. So ANS is all about the independent movement of organs, right, involuntary.
What?
Your visceral reflexes that control everything from blood pressure to breathing to body temperature. Sympathetic is also known as what?
Fight or flight.
Fight or flight. Parasympathetic?
Ras, ras, ras.
Digest. Uh. What's neuronal divergence mean? I saw you read it. If I say there's a lot of neuronal divergence, what does it sound like? Yeah, exactly, something splits, so neuronal divergence is where one neuron is gonna split onto many neurons. And so it's gonna affect a lot of things. So the sympathetic side, the fight or flight, does that a lot, branches out and then affects, has widespread effects over your body very quickly. Right, which makes sense, when you're almost in a car accident, does it take a while for you to get like all amped up? No, no, it's like seconds, right, and it's everywhere, jittery everywhere. So neuronal divergence is. Excuse me. The splitting of a lot of neurons onto others, so it has widespread effects. Um, adrenaline secretes what? Adrenaline, also known as? Epinhephrine?
Norbinhephrine.
Norbinhephrine, yeah. Parasympathetic has less neuronal divergence. Itteric system, why is that cool? Got its own innovation, yeah, exactly, very, but does it have input from the CNS?
Yes.
Yeah, so CNS still has input on it, it's like speed up or slow down, but it controls itself. Why do, it's sympathetic nervous system activates and it releases norbinhephrine, why does that speed up those things but slow down your digestive system? Different receptors. When the parasympathetic activates, why does it not have the same effect as the sympathetic? Different receptors and different. Different receptors and different? Hormones, neurotransmitters. Uh, cholinergic receptor is for?
Acetylcholine.
Acetylcholine. Uh, adnergic receptor. Adder. What else did we talk about this release?
That's for albumin.
Adrenaline, yep. Don't worry about muscular. Uh, yep, so nore- epinephrine or adrenaline, noradrenaline, right, adnergic receptors, adnergic factors. So neuro, so the receptors and the neurotransmitters can play all on account, the nerve is gonna respond, right? Cool means, what does dual innovation mean? Means two what?
Oh, sorry for yawning.
Alright, it means you have both fi- uh, sympathetic and parasympathetic feeding into the same organ. Right, so one will fire, increase it, the other will fire, decrease it, and it keeps that homeostasis. Uh, that's the antagonistic, you almost never see cooperative, it's very rare, that would give that the same nerve. Um, so antagonistic effects, everything's gonna be heart rate, you're gonna see pupils dilating and constrict. That's gonna be one fires, the other would fires, it has opposing effects. Now, what was the example I gave for when you don't have dual innovation? You only have one. That is one of them, but yes, but. Pressure, the one I gave was uh, blood vessels, right?
Okay.
So it, oh, it doesn't have one pulling one way, one pulling the other, it doesn't do that, so instead you just have the sympathetic. So it depends how quickly it fires. Right, it's almost like Morse code, so if it fires very slowly, it's gonna tell the blood vessel to dilate. Alright, if it starts pumping very quickly, it's gonna tell the blood vessel to want to constrain, right? And then. Why is caffeine help you stay awake, I need more. What does it do?
It binds the receptor.
Yeah, it binds the adenosine receptor and blocks it, right? So it doesn't make you tired, everyone take a nice swig of caffeine to get through the day. Alright, so that's the ANS. If you notice, the ANS is a short lecture, so. There is not that much on it, okay, it's just, this is mostly fight or flight. And rest and digest, right, understanding those concepts. How do we feel about all this? Is there anything you wanted to recap or any questions you have? Wanted to go over? The other thing is, did y'all see that I posted the um, practice final exam? On McGraw Hill, so there's a practice final.
Oh, the way all of like three, three, three.
Actually, I think you took it. Yeah, and I started to answer, answer like the first four questions. Okay, I was like, yeah, sure, you open it, okay.